Could you please read Bill 236?
Bill 236, amend ordinance number 13-65 as amended relating to the public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014. Appropriates revenues in the federal grant sexual assault nurse coordinator grant account $24,946 and appropriate state to the sexual assault nurse coordinator account. Funds will be used to contract an agency to oversee coordinate and perform services of the police department sexual assault forensic examiner program. Reference communication 784 introduced by Ms. Pointexter to approve SC 160.
Ms. Pointexter?
I motion to approve Bill 236.
Motion by Ms. Pointexter, signed by Mr. Kneeha. Is there any discussion on Bill 236? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is, um, eight ayes and one absent. Bill 236 moves to second reading. Okay, Bill 243.
Bill 243, amend ordinance number 13-66 as amended relating to the public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014. As the public works, they the Hua Street drainage improvement project county project for $20,000 to the capital budget. Funds for the project shall be provided from the general fund and/or other sources contingent to relief $20,000. Funds would be used towards roadway drainage improvements and concrete sidewalk. Reference communication 832 introduced by Ms. Pointexter, wave FC note requires two-thirds vote of the entire membership to amend pursuant to section 10-6E Hawaii County Charter.
Ms. Pointexter?
Motion to approve Bill 243.
Move by Ms. Pointexter, second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are eight ayes and one absent. Bill 244.
Bill 244, amend ordinance number 13-66 as amended relating to public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014. As the public works downtown kilo accessibility and mobility improvements project county project for $100,000 to the capital budget. Funds for the project shall be provided from general obligation bonds, capital projects, funds, fund balance and/or other sources $100,000. Funds would be used towards a downtown kilo parking and traffic calming plan and a countywide complete street policy. Reference communication 833 introduced by Ms. Pointexter, wave FC note requires two-thirds vote of the entire membership to amend pursuant to section 10-6E Hawaii County Charter.
Ms. Pointexter? Motion to approve Bill 244.
Move by Ms. Pointexter, second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are now nine ayes, everybody is present. I'm going to, um, go back to Bill 231 draft two. Mr. Clerk.
Bill 231 draft two adopts a pay plan for persons employed by the county other than those whose pay is otherwise provided for. Designates payroll periods, pay days, prescribes requirements with respect to official stability bonds and repeals ordinance number 13-50 and all other amendments thereto, Sid, ordinance to be known as the salary ordinance of 2014. This measure also covers other matters relating to the compensation and temporary appointment of county employees. Reference communication 783.2 introduced by Ms. Pointexter, approve SC 159.
Ms. Pointexter?
Motion to approve Bill 231 draft two.
Move by Ms. Pointexter, second by Ms. Ford.
Do you all? Okay, we've got all kinds of amendments here. I'm going to direct the council's attention to communication 783.4. I'm going to tell you what this is about, but I think at the end of it, I might just withdraw and let Ms. Toriano's communication take its place. All right, so this is for the SA1 position, which is the special assistant to the chair who apparently, and Jay can cover this better than me, apparently works as the office manager. And what I wanted to do was, um, this person hasn't, the person in this position doesn't even go up to step D, which everybody else gets at least to D, much less G. So I made this suggestion to do this.
The point of order is regarding the communications 783 points, or before we talk about it, shouldn't there be a mention?
Did I just discuss that I was going to talk about it and then probably withdraw it in favor of Ms. Toriano's bill? I just discussed that.
Ms. Ford, um...
So I'm going to...
You don't have to withdraw it if it isn't, um...
I'm not like, I'm just discussing this.
We're right now discussing the bill itself, too.
Right.
So you would have to, um, discuss your, um, your concept in the context of the bill itself and then...
Okay. Everything I said applies to the bill, thank you.
And if you don't need to, um, introduce it...
I don't want to introduce it. I don't want to introduce it. However, now let me go to communication 783.7 from Ms. Toriano, and I move to amend Bill 231 draft two with the content of communication 783.7.
It has been moved by Ms. Ford and seconded by Mr. Kern to amend Bill 231 draft two with the contents of communication 783.7.
Okay, now Ms. Toriano is there in the Hilo side. What she did was to round the numbers that I had placed in my first communication up to make it appropriate for the two pay periods per month. Ms. Toriano, would you like to discuss this particular amendment?
Oh, I thank you for that brave offer, council member board. And thank you. Our communication basically was submitted with the thought that should the county council like to add steps D and E to the salary range SA-1, that that number be a number that could be evenly divided into all pay periods. It's for payroll purposes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toriano. I like what she did, and I understand why she did it, and I would like to see the council pass this, but that's subject to discussion. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on communication 783.7?
Hi, to...
Ms. Willie.
Okay, um, just getting beyond the rounding off bit, um, why would we need this administrative position to be going up to a salary that's, um, even above our own? Yeah, could you respond and clarify? I don't, um, you know, I don't understand the justification for this. I'm not, I don't even know who's in this position, so...
May I?
Would you please, um, explain just why this position, what it is, and why it would be accorded, um, uh, I realize it doesn't have, it only has three steps, but they're already starting at 45, 48 and over 50,000.
Mr. Yoshimoto?
I'm just asking, Mr. Yoshimoto.
But before he answers, I think Ms. Ford has the point of order. I'm not sure what, thank you, I will call a point of order.
Mr. Yoshimoto did not do this. I did it. And I did it because I felt that all physicians should have at least four, if not five or more steps to them. It wasn't based on my salary or anybody else's salary. It was just based on the fact that this salary range stopped at step C. Now, I think if you want to know what that physician does for the chairperson, that would be an appropriate question to ask Mr. Yoshimoto, but it's, I did this, not him.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. To me, the philosophy between having three or four steps isn't, you know, I bet, um, you know, I don't have a great appreciation for that rationale for doing this, but I would like to hear from the chair, so what he thinks about this and why, um, why we would do this.
Mr. Yoshimoto, are you, oh, prepared to answer, Ms. Willie?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I think Ms. Willie's question is, what does the special assistant do? Is that like the first question, Ms. Willie?
Yeah, but what is your, I'd like to know your opinion and why this position would be deserving of those higher grades. And I'm not saying that, that everybody's deserving, it's just relative to all of the positions that go from 30,000 on up, so...
Okay, I'm trying to figure out what your question is, but, um, basically, I'll take a stab at it, Ms. Willie, and you let me know if I'm off track. Okay, the special assistant basically is like our office manager. She oversees the operations of my office and the council in general, so the responsibilities are broad, they're far ranging, from travel requests, mileage claims, getting things done on deadline, everything that you can think of that goes on in our office, I ask a special assistant to take charge of. So in terms of the responsibility, there's a tremendous amount. In terms of whether there should be a D or an E, it looks like when you look at the entire scale of all of the grades, and this is the one, the only one, I think, that only has an ABC, whereas everyone else seems to have many more steps up to I or L or P or whatever it is. So this is not necessarily saying that, you know, there's going to be any changes, this just gives us, I think, a better way of making things fair. Because as you said, Ms. Willie, if you just looked at it as just saying, well, you know, three steps is enough because this is a certain amount, I also think you need to consider the amount of responsibility that's placed upon a person that would have to fill that role. So I wouldn't look at it as just, you know, adding two more steps, I would just say that this provides a better, a better range to get qualified people. Thank you.
Okay, just in terms of my, um, input, I just want to say, relative to, let's say, council member Ilagon, his office, my office, where you have one staff basically overseeing the office, I realize it's not the council services, but every aspect, and we're talking top range right now, more than 20,000 or maybe 20, close to $25,000 difference, I'm just not sure. I might be more comfortable if this was adding a step D and not a step E. I'll yield and listen to other, um, opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Omiishi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Yoshimoto, um, don't you also have an assistant below that this position?
Which one are you talking about, Mr. Omiishi?
This council, this, your council chair's this SA1. Don't you have someone below that this SA1?
Yes, that's correct.
So if that person that was below SA1, couldn't they handle some of the responsibilities that you just mentioned?
Um, he does though, he's in Kona right now. He's with you.
What's that? You're not coming in clear.
He's in Kona right now, he's staffed in Kona.
Okay, so can they be sharing duties?
They do.
Okay. Okay, so then why, okay, but your explanation why you felt that this raise is needed to be was because of the things that the SA1 does, correct?
No, you're not correct.
Okay, what did? So, okay, so what, so what did you say?
I said that...
Ms. Willie's question.
I said that, um, right now we have ABC, so I think D and E provides a better range, and it's fair, when you look across the board, you're looking at all of the different ranges that we have here. I'm not saying that there's going to be any raises, because this is not appropriating a raise, it's just giving us different steps. That's all that we're doing, so we need to just focus on that. And then if anyone wants to change salaries for anybody, you know, that's, you know, that's another discussion for another day. This just adds a D and an E. In terms of responsibilities, you know, it's not only our office, like I said, it's the entire office, it's all, all of the nine council offices. So, you know, I know all of our staff work hard, but this person is called upon to oversee everything pretty much that comes through our office in terms of whether it's meeting deadlines and the things that I mentioned before. So it's just adding two steps. It's up to the council, I just think it's more fair when you look at it. I don't mean to steal your thunder, Ms. Omiishi, but you can have a front row.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, the other question would be, okay, so if we do pass this, it could take effect where the chair could approve this step movement, correct?
Yes, if there's money, depending upon what happens for everything else, because you can see there's a lot of other possible amendments, so yes, that's true, it's possible.
Right, so the council members wouldn't know if that this SA1 would get a raise or not, correct?
Well, everyone's salary is public record as far as I can understand.
So I understand, but we wouldn't know at what time or when, if there was, if this is approved and it was given to the SA1, council members wouldn't know on what the decisions or when this would have, or had happened. Because there wouldn't be any discussion, what I'm trying to say, because it would be up to the chair to do this, correct?
That's right, that's the same way we set the salaries for the council ladies.
Yeah. Okay, and then, so, you know, I don't think at this time, um, we should be looking at this, and so, you know, I won't be supporting this request, thank you.
Ms. Pointexter?
Hi, I'd like to ask council member Yoshimoto a question.
Mr. Yoshimoto?
Council member Yoshimoto, you stated that the reason or the justification for seeing the step increases or that to put, to give some kind of method to the madness that we have going on in our, these steps. You stated that, you know, you need like qualified to attract qualified employees, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a place where you have a criteria of what those qualifications are to meet this type of step movement?
Yes.
There is written qualifications, so they have, there is currently written qualifications in order to qualify for this position?
Well, there's not written qualifications as far as I know. Basically, when I interview people, I make sure that they have the experience necessary, the knowledge, the people's skills to do the job, so, I'm sorry, Ms. Pointexter, I thought, I thought you meant, is there qualifications? The answer is yes, because I want to make sure that people are put in the right places that they're responsible for. But as far as I know, written, I, other than a general description, I don't know, same thing with council ladies, I think there's a general description, but I don't know that there's anything specific about MQs or anything like that.
Okay, that's where I have a problem with, coming from an HR background, is having all these step movements and not having guidelines or, you know, we talk about qualifications, what are they, how do they, what criteria are we looking at for any kind of step increase, whether it be on merit increase or a cost of living increase? And I have a problem with that, I'm struggling with that. I just want to let everybody know that, that's the piece that I'm, I'm struggling with. I agree, you know, when we go back, I know we're just on that one right now, so then later I'll, I'll talk about what the original bill is, but, so those are my concerns and caution to the council that we need to start definitely figuring out a method to this madness, but, thank you.
Mr. Kern?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think, um, as far as adding the step movements to it, I think that it would put it into basically the same type of format that a lot of the other ones are at. I completely see what Mr. Yoshimoto is saying, like I have no idea if I've ever been the chair, I didn't know what those responsibilities would be, but I can see in hiring somebody that you would want some, some range there, because you're not sure what kind of candidate you're going to get. You might get somebody in the best candidate you can get, if they're going to do the job and the pay range would be maybe starting at B or C. You may get somebody that is just a superstar, and in order to get them to work for that, you might need to be able to pay them a little more as long as the budget's there. So I think it comes down to with this particular position is, do you trust your chairperson as a council and the decision that they're going to make? I also hear what Ms. Pointexter said as far as like having certain criteria, that they have to have a degree in something, you know, like a, you know, a degree in business or management or whatever that is. That's something that we could look, I don't think that's, we're not going to be able to do that here in this discussion. So the discussion is, do we, do we want to be able to have that range that the chair will have the discretion to do? And I, personally, I feel comfortable with it because as a councilor, I'm hopefully helping select that chair and selecting them for their leadership qualities and for their decision-making skills. I could see in some cases that it may not work out quite right, especially if there's a more of a split in the majority. But at the same time, I just think it does make sense to have that range to attract the type of qualified person, and this person could be in there for many years, and they might stay there when the chairs change, because they're qualified for it, and if they were, it would make sense for them to have the higher pay range. And again, if you get somebody that's just a superstar, you're going to need to be able to pay them, okay, in order to keep them. So right now, I don't have a problem with this, because it doesn't say there's any mandatory thing in there, as Mr. Yoshimoto says, we're not giving raises, we're just giving opportunities that those could happen. But that, thank you.
Mr. Kneeha?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support this. As Mr. Kern stated, this isn't an attempt to give any raises to anybody, it's just adding two more, adding D and E, and that's all I see, is making it fair all around, so that's, that's what I got out of it, that's why I'm supporting it, and basically I have nothing else to say about it, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kneeha. Anybody else during the first round? Hilo, um, do you wish to comment before I ask for a second, second chance to speak? I was just asking if anyone else wanted to speak during this first round, or? I don't hear anybody answering yet. So, um, if you want to speak again, Ms. Pointexter?
I just wanted to state that I'm not supporting this, and the only reason why I'm not supporting this at this time is because we have a lot going on with the C1, C2, and to bring all this in, I don't think it's the appropriate time right now, because we're all going to, our terms are going to be up in December. If we want, if we truly are trying to set this for the next council and try to put some methods in, we need to do a better job at this instead of picking and choosing which one. So I'm not comfortable with going in, trying to make it halfway decent and try to pick and choose, and my other concern is that if this goes into effect, you know, my council member Yoshimoto, Omiishi, has stated that an increase can be given during the short period of time during this term, which will mean that when the person turns out, their staff or whomever will get the raise will be paid at the unindependent rate, the percentage is a higher percentage rate, which our, our county, probably our unindependent insurance rate will end up going up, and then the payout for vacation or anything will be paid out at a higher rate. And my concern is that all of our staff members already have received raises this year, and it was retroactive back to July 2013. So I, I understand the public's concern of giving another raise or may give another raise, I'm not saying will, I say that could happen, give another raise during the same year, which I agree that should not happen, or something should be put in place to reassure the public that that will not happen. So I'm going to be bringing something forward in a little bit and that will hopefully bring some reassurance to the public. So at this point, I'm not supporting this current amendment, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Thank you. I'd like to propose a compromise on this. I'm not changing anything in Ms. Toriano's amendment 783.7, but I suggest that we look at section 12 in the bill itself. This ordinance shall be known as the salary ordinance of 2014, and the salary is here and should take effect on July 1st, um, 2014. We could say in here, for everybody but for all departments except the legislative branch, which shall take effect, I think December 1st is the new date, you could make the legislative branch effective December 1st of 2014. That stops anybody from getting a raise. I don't know what Ms. Pointexter's amendment is, because I haven't looked at it, but that's a possibility that we can take care of today. I yield.
Can I just answer a question? I'm taking care of that, what you're saying is being done in my amendment, so, thank you.
Madam Chair? Point of, point of questioning. Yeah, well, with the potential amendment that is coming up that I think will help take care of that, we could maybe look at that and then add this one to that.
I was going to just suggest that, that maybe we could...
To table this?
Table communication 783.7 until we deal with some of the other amendments that have been...
Yeah, and then my suggestion would be to think, Ms. Pointexter, one minute.
Okay, do you want to make that motion then?
Uh, move to table communication 783.7. Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Kern and signed by Mr. Kneeha to table communication 783.7. Any discussion? Mr. Omiishi?
What I was going to mention before we got this tabled was that I think we should look at or have HR, our HR look at the whole, um, different levels of pay for all the different positions, because now we're only picking here and there, and later someone else could come in with another class, right, and say, oh, that we should add on to that class and so forth. So I think we should just postpone this whole thing and have someone work with HR to figure out every class and make sure that every class is suited properly, and then also maybe adding in wording where, you know, this takes effect upon the council members' election, or, right, we're digging in and something like that. So that way, when it comes back to us, it's nice and clean and we have everything in instead of we doing this piece, you know? So I think we should kind of look at that.
I have a motion to table, so I think you're proposing a motion to postpone, but maybe we should hold off on that one while we deal with this motion first and then see where...
I was talking like against, you know, like tabling this, maybe we should withdraw it and then just postpone it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this, on the motion before us, this motion to table communication 783.7? Ms. Willie, on the table.
I didn't have my hands up before any of the, so this got into the tabling went on. And I, I guess I'm okay with that, I think opening it up to where we're looking at everything all at once, including perhaps my proposed amendment and discuss this all together.
My intention, um, looking at this would be to lay aside this communication from the Department of Human Resources and deal with the, the sort of philosophical amendments that are before us from yours and Ms. Pointexter.
And I...
And then we can keep moving through.
I would like to make a comment in response to what Ms. Omiishi said, is I was trying to look at where I felt there were egregious issues.
Well, right now I'm on the motion to table, so I need to disprove that.
Okay. Fine.
All in favor of tabling communication 783.7? Seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, I have one no here in Kona, was there a no in Hilo? No, okay, there's, um, eight ayes and one no. Um, 783.7 is tabled for now, and I'm going to recognize Ms. Pointexter.
Okay, I'd like to amend Bill 231 draft two with the contents of communication 783.8.
Second.
Okay, so what I did, if you...
Okay, I just restate that, Ms. Pointexter, my motion to amend, um, Bill 231 draft two with the contents of communication...
783.8.
783.8.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what I did is on the following page, I left the ABCD in... So what I did is on the following page, I left the A, B, C, D in. At first, I wanted to take away A, B, C because we know that nobody is at the A, B, C level. But once I met with Human Resources, because I wanted to know how would it affect all the paperwork and payroll and all of that, and if I would switch D to A, which I wanted to do, that means paperwork would have had to be done. So I left it as is as Ms. Councilmember Ford had it. The only thing different that I did was I did the rounding so that it was, yeah, like Ms. Toriano's, and we came up with the same number, so it's kind of feeling good, I want to add the carrots on that one. But anyway, so I left that as is, the only thing that I did was rounding. And I did that because I wanted to save time and money because it was going to be, it would consume, it consumes a lot of time to redo all the paperwork come July 1st, should this have passed because it says effective 2014. I did it also for CA2. The one thing that I did and put in, if you look at the page after that, I said, "The council chairperson may appoint employees to any of the steps within the appropriate pay grade and may authorize and approve any step movement along the appropriate pay grade." That was already in. I'm adding, "Provided however, the council chairperson may not authorize and approve any upward step movement prior to the inauguration of the 2014-2016 council term. Prior to any appointment or step movement in CA1 and CLA1 positions so authorized by the council chairperson, the council member to whom said personnel is assigned shall review and approve the appointment or step movement." And this is for the 2014-16. So the reason why I did this is I wanted to reassure the public, you know, on the concerns that they have for additional raises. Because as I stated earlier, all of our staff got raises this year and that retro back to July 2013. So we just got those raises. So I think the perception in the public, and even when I read letters to the editor, their perception that we were in here trying to give raises to our staff at this time. And that's not what I think our intention was. And I think it was just to make sure we can clean this up. And I feel that we shouldn't be anyway having additional raises on top of what we already had and that it wouldn't be fair because of a lot of us, our terms are up right now, you know, come December. So it's a short window, and I don't think it would be appropriate to give raises there which will affect, you know, unemployment insurance rates, which will affect the payout, you know, at higher rates. So I'm trying to reassure the public with putting this section, adding that language in there, which I think is being fair and reasonable. And I wanted to say, the last time that I spoke at the committee level, I was totally against this. I agree, I looked at the pay scales, and I do agree that we need to move and we need to, again, I keep saying this, have a method to the madness. And we do. And so I want to thank Councilmember Ford for pushing us to look at a method, to bring a method about. But I don't think it should take effect in this short period of time when we're, we don't know who's coming back or not. And we already, again, we already have raises, so I hope you support me on this. Not us, I mean, I'm talking about our staff. And this is basically to, the step movements that we're doing right now is basically affecting staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poindexter. Mr. Kern?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would support this, this makes sense. I do like that it takes it out of some of the political types here and it just, this makes sense whether we're sitting here or not, this would make sense to me. And it also makes sure that we, you know, are valuing the public trust. And it's not like, hey, we're doing this and there's a quick move being made, this is happening, here's when it's going to happen, and it does make sense. And, you know, none of us benefit from it, none of our staff benefit from it right now, even though, you know, I would love to be able to give them, give them that benefit. But I'll support this, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Onishi?
Thank you. Yes, I will also support this, and this looks really good. The only question I had is if we mostly look on Ms. Poindexter's amendment, if you turn to the second page, and it's kind of weird, it's like if you have the E, CA2, they started A, or you go to AD, they start at C, AU starts at C, LE1 starts at C, then you go LE2 goes A, CA goes A, and then C2, CA2 goes A. Okay, so if you look at the second page, right, I mean, it's kind of weird, like, why would it all be like starting at A?
I, the reason why I didn't change all of that yet because it would take so much time for us to start reviewing all of that. I think we just need to start addressing it now and making sure that it's, my main purpose is that it's not going to be in effect till the new council term. And that during that time, we start looking and working with HR so we can put, get a method in place.
Yeah. And then, well, that's why, see, I did, like, want to postpone this so that they could go back and work.
I want to make a point of clarification for you, Ms. Onishi, that the way that it currently is, is written like this, it's not something that means-
No, yeah, I understand. So what I'm saying is if we want to try to fix everything, so that's why I wanted to postpone this and have someone like maybe the finance committee chair work with HR to fix all this because it looks weird. I mean, like, certain positions started A and certain ones started C. And then, like, this would take effect anyway in the next term. So we have time to really fix all this. So just a suggestion, thank you. But I do support the amendment.
Ms. Ford?
You know, when we look at the bill, there's more in this bill than just the legislative branch, which is, is affected? Yes. Yeah, there's other departments in here. We can't just stop working on this because we've got to get it done for the other departments. So we might as well just do it for ours at the same time. I can appreciate what Ms. Onishi is saying, it does look a little bit strange. But when you look at some of these pay grades and where they start, you know, I've made comments on where some of these pay grades start, and they're pretty much in the tank. I'm not comfortable with that. We could do, we could continue to work on this and get it passed, and then afterwards, we can come back on a new bill and address the step alphabetic coding because that is a cleanup. That's not something that we're dealing with right now. But I'm certainly not interested in stopping this bill that affects other departments just because we want to clean our own. Let me add one more thing. I like this. It is the compromise worded differently, but it comes out the same way, and I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Ms. Willie, do you have a comment? I'm sorry, we didn't recognize you.
Yeah. I'm not quite sure whether I'm going beyond the bounds of what I can discuss, but my amendment, my proposed amendment, in some ways parallels this, but replaces, adds these new steps, but does it by replacing the A, B, C, D. I'm open to this arrangement. And when we get to my amendment, I just want to say there are two sections of it, and it may be that I can wait and address one part in the next, if this moves forward. I'm not sure. So maybe I need to talk to John exactly how I would handle this, but I'm not opposed to this, I just want to say. And exactly, we'll vote on this, and at this point of order, then we would discuss my amendment. I just want to know how I-
After we take care of the motion on the floor regarding Ms. Poindexter's amendment, we will, you have a chance to introduce your amendment, which we can debate.
Thank you. So I just want to say I'm not opposed to this.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make one final statement? The only reason why I think right now, and like what Ms. Ford said, we've got to push this through, and because there's a, we have to put an annual salary ordinance in every year. So something has to go in. The only reason why I agreed with HR and I think payroll too, changing the letters is meaning, is changing a lot of paperwork at this time immediately when I think would be appropriate to do at that next term, when they're going to have to do the paperwork in less than six months from the time anything gets approved here. So that's the only reason why we're saving, time is money, and I don't want to consume the time of HR or with the people in payroll and finance with that. So, yeah, before July 1st. But I, that's the only reason why, because I agree too with Mr. Onishi and Councilmember Willie that we should, that should be addressed, and it needs to be addressed and cleaned up. I do agree with you. However, I know that we need to have an annual salary ordinance passed, so I hope you support this. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Thank you. I support the amendment, but I just wanted to make something a little perhaps clearer. The last sentence that states, "Prior to any appointment or step movement in the CA1 or CLA1 positions so authorized by the council chairperson, the council member to whom said personnel is assigned shall review and approve the appointment or step movement." That's actually backwards, as far as I can recall, it's the other way around. The council member makes a recommendation and the chairperson signs off on it. That's how I did it last year, that's how we did it two terms ago, I think that's how the last chairman did it, the first time I was here. So all the eight years I've been here, that's been the case. So actually, if you want to get it accurate, it should be the other way around. The council member makes a recommendation, and that is reviewed by the council chairperson. But that's what I did last year and two terms ago, and whenever I've been chair, is to refer to the council member. So just so that the public gets the correct perception, because right now it kind of seems like the chair sets the salary, and that's not true. It's the council member that makes the recommendation, and it's the chairperson that approves. So I don't think I can clean that up now or at the next meeting.
Okay. Ms. Yoshimura, Ms. Poindexter, can I make a comment?
Thank you. The reason why it was put in there, it was just to, because we don't know who the next council chair or whenever that will happen, and it's just a safety mechanism that the chair doesn't automatically say, okay, Val, Val's person should get, when she, when the term starts in December and paperwork is done, whoever is in the chair position and whoever is in whatever office, say J or Brenda's person turned out, so whoever's taking that place. And that chairperson will say, okay, that's, her staff should start at C without even her knowing. So this is just a safety mechanism where the chair will have to honor, like what you said, that the council member comes to the chair to do that. But in this, right now, we don't have a safety mechanism in place that doesn't allow the chair to just go ahead and do it. So this kind of puts that safety mechanism in there that forces the chairperson to say, hey, wait a minute, I just cannot just go give them, say that they should, work with HR and say they should start at this level. But it pulls them back into the proper procedure where the council member should be approaching. Because right now, you can, without my approval, give a raise to my staff without this condition in here. Am I, am I correct?
Oh, Ms. Poindexter, if I can address Ms. Poindexter, Madam Chair.
Ms. Yoshimura, go ahead.
Yeah. No, Val, I agree with you 100%. I don't have any problem with the first part of the sentence. All I'm saying is, is that the last sentence sounds like it's the chair who says this is the salary and the council member signs off on it, when in actuality it's the reverse. The council member comes to the chair, provides a recommended salary, and then the chair approves it. So it's kind of juxtaposed, it's reversed. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so I can make that change. Okay, okay, I can make that change if, if need be, so I just, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Thank you. Let me try this on the second sentence verbally. Prior to any appointment or step movement in the CA1 and the CLA1 positions, strike the word "so," positions authorized by the council member, the council chairperson, strike "to whom said personnel is assigned," just strike that out, shall review and approve the appointment or step movement. Now, let me read it without the strikeout. Prior to any appointment or step movement in the CA1 or CLA1 positions authorized by the council member, the council chairperson shall review and approve the appointment or step movement. That's the way we've done it this term, the last term, the term before, and fight them all the way back. And good luck, we haven't got this in the budget, so good luck with that, talking to Ms. Yoshimura. Except for me, of course, Jay. I yield. So, you know, wait before I yield. If you want, we can have staff here type this up. I can have my staff, if you want. Type up what I have made as the correction, and then we can table this and come back to this one in a few minutes, if that's what you guys want. I'm hearing a nod, a nod?
For me, down the next line.
I agree.
Would you like to do it today or would you like to-
I would like to do it today. As much as we can just done.
I would come.
Okay.
So you haven't made a motion to table, which is thinking that might be, okay. Let me call on Ms. Willie then.
Okay. I just want to be clear that what you were then saying is that the council chair shall review and approve. We are telling him that he approves this, the way that that wording is done.
The way I read it?
The way you read it, perhaps it should be, shall review and consider approval or something like that.
Okay.
I realize what we're intending, but otherwise-
And may approve.
And other, right, otherwise it's, you know, then we go and say, sorry, Jay, you don't have any choice, it says here, you shall approve whatever.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. I'd like to commend Margaret for catching this, and I'll add the word "may" here.
Okay. At this time, I'm just going to take one quick question from Ms. Willie, if I can have two motions on the table at the same time. Yeah, no. No, um, what, quick question, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to table Communication 783.8.
Thank you. I have a motion for Mr. Kern, a second from Mr. Kanuhara to table Communication 783.8. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that is nine ayes. And if you give them 783.8 is tabled. Ms. Willie? Would you like to introduce your amendment?
Okay. Okay, so moving to amend, what is it, Communication 783?
You want to move to amend Bill 231 Draft 2 with the contents of Communication 783.?
Yes. Thank you, with the contents of Communicat-, it's on, okay. Okay. What is the number of the bills that we're on?
It's 231.
Okay. 231, okay. I'd like to amend the contents of Bill, Bill 231 Draft 2 with the contents of Communication Number 783.6.
Move on, Ms. Willie, a second one to Ms. Ford.
Okay, thank you. And let me say, this, my amendment has really two parts. The first part, dealing with CA1, was basically going to what Ms. Ford and Ms. Poindexter were doing, but in a different way, and it would basically make it that this goes into effect immediately in July. So that someone who was now in a, it crosses out A, B, C, and D, so the starting position would be A. So I'm not going to discuss that further. So, I'm not going to discuss that further, I'm going to support, um, Ms. Poindexter's version. But I, I do want to address the second item here, and that's the CA2, is I had, there's, currently, there's no one in the position of CA2, and I'm just trying to clean up something as it goes. I, my, the way I looked at CA2 is that had a little, couple more steps, so you could go a little higher than what a CA1 could do. Um, and a CA2 is basically one of the four or five additional, or four additional, um, full-time staff positions that the chairperson has. So, there's council aides, we each have a council aide, and the chairman also has a council aide, he also has a second council aide, and this allows him to give that, one of those two council aide positions, a little bit higher salary step, whether he did it or not, than in CA1. So, I think, given that we're now going to have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, eight steps to just allow that to all be one, we're not eliminating, we're not affecting any current staff. So, um, if, I'm not sure what, um, I'd like to know what, um, should, the council chair has to say, but that was what I'd like to put up for, um, a discussion, and if we were to go with it, we'll figure out how to add it into the other amendment. So, I yield, and whatever, open to whatever thoughts others have.
Ms. Ford. Thank you. And ask Mr. Yoshimoto a question.
Mr. Yoshimoto?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Yoshimoto, is it true that right now you have a vacancy in the CA2 position?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Um, I'm going to agree, thank you, Mr. Yoshimoto, I'm going to agree with Ms. Willie, and I'm going to explain why. Whether you are a CA1 or a CA2, you're a council aide, you're doing exactly the same job. It doesn't matter that you're working for the chair. You're doing, as, the council aide job description is the same for both of them, and I frankly agree with Margaret that the pay scale should be identical, especially since we're adding new steps to this. I would like to see, as Margaret has done here, at least this portion of her bill, a total elimination of a CA2 position. And, um, Mr. Yoshimoto, you do have a CA1, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I, I tend to agree with this. I don't see, just because you report to the chair, you're not doing a different job. So, thank you.
I want to make one clarification. Can I respond to that for a second? Um, yes, let me just say that we would need to do a, um, we may have to do a rule change, which would be appropriate afterwards, and it still wouldn't, as I interpret it, um, the chair would still have two council aides. They would just be, they would just be both in that range, which we've now added four more levels of pay, so. Um, I'm not trying to take any staff position away necessarily in what I'm doing, but, um, I just, we're adding four more levels, well beyond what CA2 went up to, and we're not harm, affecting any personnel currently.
Mr. Yoshimoto, did you have a response, otherwise Ms. Poindexter would like to speak.
Uh, yeah, real briefly, Madam Chair, since you asked, um, yes. Uh, I, I think it's fine, it simplifies things, so long as HR is okay with it, and we can make the appropriate adjustments.
It's a vacant.
Yeah, it's, well, yeah, it's a vacant position since November. Um, November, November, October, somewhere there, yeah. Um, I believe, oh, yeah. So, it's okay, Chair.
That would be fine, but just as a caution, so that you do not lose the position, you would want to, if I may use the word, exchange it.
Exchange.
It's a vacant, uh, position, and you would exchange, well, a new one for special assistant, and would ask for the council. It's a one for one. You're not eliminating the position.
Right, right. They're just saying classified under CA1.
Okay.
Right.
Very good.
Okay. So, so, yeah, council members in corner, yes, um, Chair Toriano indicated that, um, they can, they can make the appropriate adjustment. For simplicity's sake, that's fine. I agree.
Madam Chair. Mr. Illogon?
Thank you. Um, I also have a question. Right now, on our Rule Num, Number 27, it states that one C, the council person is assigned four additional full-time staff. It's one executive assistant to the chairperson, EA, two deputy executive assistants to the council chairperson, EA dash two, three special assistant, and four council aide to the chairperson in addition to subsection 1B. Does Rule Number 27 also have to change, um, for the current change that we're going to do for this salary?
Um, thank you, Mr. Illogon. I think, um, Ms. Willie, um, alluded to that earlier, but she'd like to answer.
Yes. Uh, let me say that, um, I, I think it would need to be changed, however, um, if you notice where it says council aide to the chairperson, it doesn't have a salary range after it, like as such of them do EA and EA2, so, um... But if, um, others do, John Legislative Research does believe so, or Corporation Council, or, um, uh, then we can change it, and the proper order would be to do that after we have passed this bill. So, um, I think we, um, determine whether we're passing this, and then make a decision whether the wording here needs to be changed. On its face, I don't think there's any, um, real problem.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Yoshimoto.
Before we leave, um, you know, I'd like to follow up on one particular, uh, I guess description of the council aide to the chair. Uh, it was just brought to my attention that in our administrative manual, this is just for, uh, the council member's information as well as for the public, uh, this is the description, as indicated in our admin manual, for council aide to the chair. It states, "In addition to the duties of a council aide, the council aide to the chair is responsible for the following duties: assisting the executive assistant with monitoring office supplies, making copies and collating testimonies on council meeting days, receiving all documents correspondence requiring the chair's signature approval recommendation, draft council certificates, and other duties as may be required." So, I stand corrected. So, the council aide to the chair does these in addition to what the council aide, um, normal duties are, and I can read that description too, if you want. Uh, but the council aide has a, its own description, and the council aide to the chair has a supplemental which adds to, uh, responsibilities, just for the record. But I'm still okay with the, with the amendment as is, because I think for simplicity purposes, um, that's fine, and I would hope that in the future, all councils would, would, um, set the courting salary based upon the needs of the position and the experience of the people. Thank you.
Mr. Kern.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it feels that we're, it's pretty much agreed upon that we're, we'd be okay with that, and it's not going to have a negative effect. Um, just going to kind of tidy things up. So, my suggestion would be is to, um, withdraw this, um, and then have, um, and Ms. Ford, while she's making the amendment already, just to add that part in there, so we can come forward with one amendment, tidy it up, and, and away we go. That's, that's my suggestion.
Thank you. Ms. Ford.
Yeah. Madam Chair.
Yep.
Mr. Illogon, I'm just gonna let Ms. Ford respond to the, um, Mr. Kern's suggestion.
Thank you. Um, my overworked staff, Lorraine, um, will be glad to run out here one more time and get this. Uh, she will do what Margaret has done and strike out the CA2 position in its entirety on Valerie's amendment that we're working on right now. So, that will take care of that. And I just want to make a comment, Mr. Yoshimoto, and no negative reflection on anybody, but everything that you named, my staff is doing, my CA does for me, and, and I'm getting nods all around the table, so, um, while we appreciate all the descriptive information, um, I think we can all agree the CA1 position is going to take care of everything. So, Lorraine, come on back.
Thank you. Ms. Willie, um...
So, I would like to withdraw, um, my proposed amendment or my motion, and is somebody else backing that?
No. We don't, we don't need to.
I, okay.
If the maker of the, of withdrawals, it can, all the way. So, um, we'll set that aside, and thank you for, um, this effort, and, um, we are still discussing then Bill 231 Draft 2.
Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion that we table Bill 231? And, uh, then we can just move on and come back and take everything off the table at one time and have it be done.
Okay.
So, I move to, uh, table Bill 231 Draft 2.
I have a motion to table Bill 31, 231 Draft 2 by Mr. Kern and second by Ms. Ford, in third discussion. Any none? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Um, Bill 231 is tabled. Mr. Clerk, I, um, know we skipped Bill 181, so could you go to the top of bills for first reading and, and read in 181?
Bill 181, amended Chapter 2, Article 15 of the White County Code, 1983, 2005 Edition, as amended relating to the code of ethics. Prohibits county officers and employees or businesses in which a county officer, employee, or the officer, employee, spouse, or dependent children or in controlling interest from contracting for goods and services with the county, with any county agency. Prohibits any elected or appointed officer or employee from appearing on behalf of any private interest before the county agency, except as specifically provided by law, and redefines the use of the term "agency." Reference Communication 600 introduced by Ms. Poindexter, negative FC 154, due to a vote of four ayes and five noes.
Um, Ms. Poindexter. Most to approve, uh, Bill 181?
Move on, Ms. Poindexter, second by Ms. Ford, during discussion.
Yes.
You're right.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly outside.
Um, everybody knows how I feel about this, um, ethics, uh, bill, and I, I won't repeat myself from the last committee meeting, but I will point out that, you know, like this morning, um, again, we had a testifier saying this bill will help the county's credibility, it brings a fair playing field, which I do agree with, and I just want to say that this is a start, um, for, uh, gaining our, our public trust, uh, and that they want this, they want some type of ethics bill. It may not be perfect, but this is a start, and I'd like to encourage everyone to think about, um, making the com, uh, ma, making the public feel comfortable, uh, about our county's credibility. So, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Thank you. Um, I most respectfully disagree, and I'm going to explain why. Um, I totally understand the public perception that there's something not too good going on when county employees get, obtain contracts. I, I totally get that. The problem that I'm having is that we have not had one piece of evidence put before this council by the administration to indicate that such nefarious deeds are actually going on. There's a public perception, and it may be correct, but we have no evidence. And without evidence, it, I find it very difficult to restrict county employees from doing, uh, from participating in a, a field bid process. Please remember, a field bid process is completely out of the hands of the employee who might have a company that might be providing equipment, material, supplies, um, or services to the county. And while this bill, I think superficially looks good, it looks like we're trying to do something, the question is, what are we trying to correct? Just a perception, or are we correcting a real problem? Without seeing any evidence produced by the administration that some employee, it's only going to take one, in my opinion, that some employee is illicitly gaining information in order to provide a field bid, I'm having difficulty, um, agreeing with Part 1 of this, of this amendment. Um, so let me go on to Part 2. So, I'm not going to support the bill for, for, for 1. In fact, if we really wanted to be sure that this is not happening, we'd have to call for an audit. That's what it would really take. Uh, I'm not prepared to hang anybody or any group of people without knowing there's something really wrong. The second thing is under Section 2-84, conflict of interest, and I have hated this section since the moment it still landed in front of us. I think that we are going to be doing ourselves as a council and future councils, councils a major disservice, and perhaps lose our right to be able to speak out against something that we think is wrong, because in this bill, it does not say who gets to decide what's in the best interest of the county. Is that some rogue attorney that we might have on the payroll and don't know about? Or is it a rogue council member? Or is it a rogue mayor? When do we lose our civil rights? I'm not voting for anything that's going to destroy our civil rights as council members. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kern.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I'm going to stand by my, uh, previous, um, discussion at their, at our committee meeting. I pretty much agree with Ms. Ford. Um, I just don't want to have any unintended consequences that could actually really hurt our county, especially in a physical way, when there is no, um, real evidence that we have a problem. If there is, like, again, that's a different story. Um, but right now, we need to, um, I don't, we need, I, I'm just not comfortable voting on this, and I think it will have a negative impact potentially. So, with that, I yield and just stick with my, uh, previous, thank you.
Uh, any other comments? Ms. Willie?
Well, you know, I really appreciate what Councilmember Kern and Councilmember Ford have said, because the administration is putting this forward, and with great support and its significance, and yet have not brought forward information, and, um, you know, the one thing I can tell you is, I have received complaints in the past about this going on from employees, that this is happening, that there are problems in this area. So, for me, it's not just a matter of perception or, uh, or just prevention, um, I have heard it. Now, I haven't explored the accuracy of those concerns, so I, you know, I don't, I mean, then it's a couple of years ago now, um, and I don't feel saying, "Okay, the coconut wireless says X, Y, and Z," but to the extent that I want you to know that there are employees that have raised this issue, um, to me, and that it compromises position. Number 2, I just, with, where the wording where it says, um, "No officer, employee, or any business employee or spouse who has a controlling interest," I really feel that that should say significant interest. You know, you're, uh, 49% versus 51, um, I don't, I think it's where you're significant interest. So, I have some concern with that wording. I find this last part rather confusing. I have some concern about that. Um, and, you know, I'm still going to support this, but I'm just raising what, where I feel that there is some ambiguity, where it says, "No officer, employee shall represent private interests, um, in any action or proceeding against the interests of the county or appear on behalf of private interest before any agency." I'm not sure if, you know, say I were to go to the county and say, "What is the status of, um, such and such development?" You know, I'm not sure, reading this, you know, maybe that would be wrong for me to do. Um, I wouldn't be taking an action in any proceeding, but I would, um, I might be representing or acting on behalf of a private interest. So, I think there is, it's hard to always draw the line, and I think some of this wording's a little difficult. But let me say, I honor that this administration is seeking to, um, prevent, um, conflicts of interest. This, we're, it's not like this county is above and beyond any allegations of, of problems and abuses through the past, and I like to, and I just want people to trust what we're doing, and I feel that that's very important. And, um, I think that we can move on, there are places we could clean this up and add, um, greater clarity, but it is a step, um, an important step, and I want to thank the mayor for doing this, and I also want to say I can understand maybe why they don't want to give you all and publicize, "Here's, this is happening." The next thing you know, we're all going to be... here's, this is happening. The next thing you know, we're all going to be in court. You know, so I think that in some ways, I feel, whatever coconut wireless I have, I don't feel that Mayor Canoe would be doing this unless he had some reasons and felt it was significant. So this in terms of my trust that he does have a rationale, I'm going to support this. And I just want to say, I agree with all the reasons that Councilmember Point Dexter said, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Anybody in Hilo wish to speak before I go back to Ms. Point Dexter?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Yoshimoto?
Yeah, I'm going to have to leave, actually, five minutes ago, but I'm going to be really brief. I looked at some of the history going back to two thousand and eight. My gut instinct tells me that this isn't the finished product yet. And, you know, while we've taken numerous times to look at this and review things, I'm just not comfortable in voting in favor of this as it is now. Do I believe that we can do better? Yes. And so what I would be recommending to the council is, is because we're at council, you know, if we vote this down, it's done for this term. So rather than do that, I would much rather see us still continue to work at this. Maybe postpone it to the call of the chair where, I think I was tried before, but it was brought back really quickly. I think we can do better. I know the intent is good, and, well, I'm just not satisfied with what we have in front of us. So I would ask councilmembers to consider that. However, I'm going to have to leave, and I'll be back in about, hopefully, forty-five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yoshimoto. Ms. Point Dexter?
Okay, and I'd like to respectfully disagree with some of the statements made that we need proof. We don't, I'm not in the business of saying, let's just wait for an accident to happen before we do something about it. I'm into prevention. I just don't see us saying, you know, we need to gather that type of evidence before we make a change in our ethics policy. I think we should work on an air of a side of caution and look at prevention and not wait for an accident to happen. And again, I will support the public opinion where we start with something, some type of ethics bill here. So again, I'm still supporting this, and I think we should look at this as a prevention measure rather than waiting for an accident to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Thank you. I am taking Mr. Yoshimoto's comments into consideration. You all know I don't like this bill. I think it's dangerous, especially Part Two, it's just completely dangerous. And there's no definition of the word "represent." It'd be one thing if you were being paid to represent a private interest. But I can go into any commission and testify on an issue that may have some private interest to it, and I'll be there defending the public interest, not the private interest. And the wording of the second part is, in my opinion, just onerous. By taking Mr. Yoshimoto's opinion, can we do better? I think we could do a whole lot better than this. And I would support his suggestion to postpone this to the call of the chair. I don't know who's going to work on this. This bill is in such bad shape right now, I wouldn't waste my time on it. But somebody else may choose to do it, take a shot at cleaning this mess up. But if you are going to, if anyone does want to take that shot at cleaning up this mess, it really needs a cleanup. It really needs to, this is ambiguous and dangerous. So, you know, I'm not going to make a motion right this second because I want to see if there's anyone else who wants to talk. But unless this is radically cleaned up, I will vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Kern, if you'll, if you'd like to go first.
Okay, sure. Okay, you know, I tried when I was in committee to postpone this, and it never worked. So I don't think we should be postponing it. We should just move on. If it does get, if it doesn't pass, then in the next term, in December second, this can be brought up again. So there is time and, you know, I don't think we need to postpone this to try and work on it. Thank you.
Mr. Kern?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we've been postponing it for quite a while now. Quite a while now. And, you know, every single time we have discussed this, we've been trying to get amendments and telling everybody to come up with more things to try to make it better. And I think we've tried enough, and I personally commend ourselves. Let's just go vote on it now, and if everybody thinks that it's good, everybody thinks it's bad, let's just see. I mean, because we have been postponing it for a while now. It has been several months. But we haven't seen really any changes to it, so, yeah. So that's just my opinion.
Ms. Ford?
Um, Madam Chair. Yeah, and you're going to get added because I'm calling for the question.
You have a what?
I'm calling for the question. I think everybody had two rounds. I call for the question.
Um, I have a call for the question.
Second.
And I have a second. So, from Mr. Iligant, so there's no discussion on that. I'll just, I guess I'll take a roll call vote on the call for the question. Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Ford?
No. Oh, wait, you're calling on the question, right?
Call for the question.
No.
Mr. Iligant?
Aye.
Mr. Kern? Mr. Kern? Mr. Nishi? Ms. Point Dexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie? Chair Yoff?
Aye.
Chair Yoff, you have seven ayes and one no and one excuse.
And, uh, Mr. Clerk, can you please take a vote on Bill 181? I will call.
Ms. Ford?
No.
Mr. Iligant?
No.
Mr. Canuha?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
No.
Mr. Nishi? Ms. Point Dexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Yoff?
Aye.
Chair Yoff, you have four ayes and four noes.
I believe the bill fails. Thank you. Back to, oh, I have a request from Mr. Canuha, now that he is in here though, that we could skip down to Resolution three six eight. It is number, it's the first item under Order of the Day, second reading. If so, there are no objections, I would like to take that out of the board.
Order it.
Resolution three six eight. I'm sorry. Resolution three six eight. Mr. Clerk, it contains seventeen of the items. It's the top of the second reading item.
Oh.
Resolution, I know, it's a resolution, but it's under, it requires, I guess, three readings for it.
Resolution three six eight dash fourteen provides for the acquisition of private properties by the eminent domain being portions of tax map keys two dash two dash zero two seven, colon, zero five eight, parcel two. Two dash two dash zero three six, colon, zero one nine, parcel sixteen. Two dash two dash zero three six, colon, zero one eight, parcel seventeen. And two dash two dash zero three six, colon, zero seven seven, parcel twenty-four, situated in Waikia District of South Hilo County and State of Hawaii for the development and construction of a right-of-way parcel needed for the Monono Street improvements, job number P three eight two eight. The acquisition of these four parcels is needed to complete the development and construction of the widening of Monono Street between Lanikahala and Kekeuana Wall Streets. Reference Communication seven nine six introduced by Ms. Point Dexter. First reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen, no, second of two required readings. Section one oh one dash one three Hawaii statute.
Um, Ms. Point Dexter?
Motion to approve Resolution three six eight dash fourteen.
Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Kern. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Before we go into the vote, um...
I'm sorry, we've already voted, so I was just reciting the vote, which was eight ayes and one excuse. So Resolution three sixty-eight is adopted.
Uh, Chair, they had, make a request that the five-day hold be suspended because there's a need for us to file the combination.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Canuha. We will make that motion now.
Uh, move to suspend our rules on the five-day hold until that is passed through. Second.
It was moved by Mr. Kern and second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? There are eight ayes and one excuse, and we will suspend the holdover and suspend it.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Canuha. Okay, I just want to finish up the bill for first reading now. Mr. Clerk, if we could go back to Bill ten four five. Bill two four five.
Bill two four five, amend ordinance number one three dash six six as amended relating to public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year July one, twenty thirteen, to June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Increases funds to the Parks and Recreation discretionary projects council district one account by sixty thousand dollars and discretionary projects council district five account by twenty-nine thousand dollars. Funds for this project shall be provided from the general fund and/or other sources contingency relief, being nine thousand dollars. Funds would be used towards capital improvement projects in the respective districts. Reference Communication eight three four introduced by Ms. Point Dexter. Wave F C note requires two-thirds vote of the entire membership to amend pursuit to Section one zero dash six E Hawaii County Charter.
Thank you. Ms. Point Dexter?
A motion to approve Bill two forty-five.
Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? There are eight ayes and one excuse. Bill two four five moves to second reading. Bill two four six.
Bill two four six, amend ordinance number one three dash six six as amended relating to public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year July one, twenty thirteen, to June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. As the Parks and Recreation discretionary projects account for council districts one, two, four, six, seven, eight, and nine at one hundred thousand dollars each. Funds for this project shall be provided from general fund and/or other sources contingency relief, seven hundred thousand dollars. Funds would be used towards capital improvement projects in the respective districts. Reference Communication eight three five introduced by Ms. Point Dexter. Wave F C note requires two-thirds vote of the entire membership to amend pursuit to Section ten dash six E Hawaii County Charter.
A motion to approve Bill two four six.
Um, Simone?
Second.
Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? Ms. Ford?
Thank you. Do we have anyone for finance over Hilo?
There's no one here right now.
Who is it?
No, there's no one here for finance.
Thank you. All right, I just want a clarification. I believe I understand this. This is setting up the line items to go up to one hundred thousand dollars. It does not put any money in those line items at this time. That's what we're passing here. I just wanted to make sure that I'm thinking correctly and the public understands this correctly. I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Bill two four six has eight ayes and one excuse. Bill two four seven.
Bill two four seven, amend ordinance number one three dash six five as amended the operating budget for the county of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Increases revenues in the transfer from general fund account thirty thousand dollars and appropriate save to the transfer to Hawaii Fund signal, traffic signals and streetlights, thirty thousand dollars. Funds would be used towards the development of construction engineering documents for the Lee Drive thematic heritage lighting project in North Kona, Hawaii. Reference Communication eight five two introduced by Ms. Point Dexter. Wave F C.
Motion to approve Bill two forty-seven?
Second.
Move by Ms. Point Dexter, second by Mr. Kern.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Canuha?
This was the companion to the original resolution, so I won't state it again, but I will recuse myself from voting and will not participate in discussion with this bill.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Canuha. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I think that would be seven ayes, one excused, and one recused. And Bill two four seven will move to second reading. That completes all the bills for first reading, so, Mr. Clerk, starting with Bill two eighteen, under second reading.
Bill two eighteen, amend ordinance number one three dash six five as amended the operating budget for the county of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Increases revenues in the changes of services, elderly, recreation services, ERS, section activities account, twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, and appropriate save to the ERS section activities account, bringing the total appropriation to ninety thousand dollars. The appropriation increases necessitated by the unanticipated increase in participation in ERS classes, which are funded by charging participants for services. Reference Communication seven five zero introduced by Ms. Point Dexter. First reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
Madam Chair? Uh, before we take a motion, I'm going to see if it's possible to request that we lump these together so we could vote on these as a package from two eighteen to Bill two thirty-five, as we've done in the past with various reports and whatnot.
So we would, um...
Have everything read in.
Have everything read in and then, um...
And take one vote.
This is all second reading.
It's all second reading. Unless there's somebody that jacks to it that has a differing opinion. If not, I think we can do that.
Is there a second? Second? What was that in the last one? Or is that just a request?
It's a request.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not a motion, it's a request, speaking before we ever had to make motions.
Can I just take a short recess? Now, would you just, um, keep reading? Um, oh, you ready to vote two eighteen?
Two eighteen got readed.
Okay, then, have a motion to approve the...
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Kern, seconded by Mr. Kamelomela. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? There are nine ayes and one excused, uh, eight ayes and one excused. Bill two eighteen, um, is adopted. Bill two two zero.
Bill two two zero, amends chapter twenty-four, article ten, division three, section two four dash two seven five, schedule twenty-three of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three two thousand and five edition as amended relating to bus stop locations, amend subsection A Hamakua to relocate an existing bus stop on the west side of Pakalana Street. Reference Communication seven five six, introduced by Mr. Kamelomela by request, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
Mr. Kamelomela.
I will go through Bill two twenty.
Moved by Mr. Kamelomela, seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill two twenty has eight ayes, one excuse, and is, um, adopted. Bill two twenty-one.
Bill two twenty-one, amends chapter twenty-four, article ten, division four, section twenty-four dash two seven six, schedule twenty-four of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three two thousand and five edition as amended relating to crosswalks. Amend section A Hamakua to relocate a crosswalk on Pakalana Street. Reference Communication seven five seven, introduced by Mr. Kamelomela by request, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
No motion to approve?
A motion to approve Bill two two one.
Moved by Mr. Kamelomela, seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill two twenty-one is adopted with eight ayes and one excuse.
Bill two two two, amends chapter twenty-four, article ten, division five, section twenty-four dash two eight zero, schedule twenty-eight of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three two thousand and five edition as amended relating to parking at any time, relating to no parking at any time as portion of Pa'Nio'a Place to subsection E Kohala. Reference Communication seven five eight, introduced by Mr. Kamelomela by request, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
I will approve Bill two two two.
Moved by Mr. Kamelomela, seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, eight ayes, one excuse, Bill two 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 is adopted. Bill two two three.
Bill two two three, amends chapter twenty-four, article ten, division five, section twenty-four dash two eight four, schedule thirty-two of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three two thousand and five edition as amended relating to two R parking areas as an existing Americans with disabilities act parking stall on Kirua Avenue to subsection C South Hilo. Reference Communication seven five nine, introduced by Mr. Kamelomela by request, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
I must approve Bill two two three.
Moved by Kamelomela, seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are eight ayes, one excuse.
Bill, Bill two two four, amends chapter twenty-four, article ten, division six, section twenty-four dash two eight eight point one, schedule thirty-six point one of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three two thousand and five edition as amended relating to active loading and unloading zones as portion of Pakalana Street to subsection A Hamakua. Reference Communication seven six zero, introduced by Mr. Kamelomela by request, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
I move to approve Bill two two four.
Moved by Mr. Kamelomela, seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill two two four is adopted with eight ayes, one excuse. Um, Bill two two five draft two.
Bill two two five draft two, amends chapter twenty-four, article eleven, division one, section twenty-four dash two nine nine of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three two thousand and five edition as amended relating to speed limits on private streets as all streets in the furniture subdivision to schedule three twenty miles per hour limit, subsection G Puna. Reference Communication seven six six point two, introduced by Mr. Kern, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
Mr. Kern.
I move to approve Bill two two five draft two.
Moved by Mr. Kern, seconded by Mr. Kamelomela. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? There are eight ayes, one excuse, Bill two two five, draft two is adopted. Bill two two six.
Bill two two six, amends chapter twenty-four, article eleven, division one, section twenty-four dash two nine eight and section twenty-four dash three zero zero of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three two thousand and five edition as amended relating to speed limits on private streets. All, adds all unpaved roads and unpaved sections of roads in the Orchidland Estate subdivision to schedule two fifty mile per hour limit and adds all paved roads and paved sections of roads in the Orchidland Estate subdivision to schedule four twenty-five mile per hour limit. Both in subsection G Puna. Reference Communication seven six seven, introduced by Mr. Kern, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
Madam Chair, move to approve Bill two two six.
Moved by Mr. Kern, seconded by Mr. Kamelomela. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? There are eight ayes and one excuse, Bill two two six is adopted. Um, Bill two... Three two.
Bill two three two, amends ordinance number one three dash six five as amended the operating budget for the county of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Increases revenues in the transfers from general fund account two thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-six cents and appropriate same to traffic signals and markings purchased and installed bus stop signs in the Hawaii Beaches subdivision, Puna District. Reference Communication seven eight eight, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Bill two thirty-two.
Moved by Ms. Point Dexter, seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill two three two is adopted with eight ayes and one excuse. Bill... Um, two, two three three draft two.
Bill two three three draft two, amends chapter two, article thirteen, section two dash seven five, Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three two thousand and five edition as amended relating to the use of the revolving fund. Amendment allows the housing development in addition to the preparation of housing development. Reference Communication seven nine three point two, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
Point Dexter. Motion to approve Bill two thirty-three.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are eight ayes, one excuse, Bill two three three is adopted. Bill two three four.
Bill two three four, amends ordinance number one three dash six five as amended the operating budget for the county of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Increases revenues of the fund balance from prior year designated account two million dollars and appropriate same to the transfer to capital projects fund account. Funds would be used towards the construction of the Kamakua Nui workforce housing in the Waikoloa area. These funds would be used, would be, these funds would be paid back at a later date to the revolving fund with the proceeds of the home sales. Reference Communication seven nine four, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen.
Motion to approve Bill...
Motion, Bill, yeah, motion to approve Bill two thirty-four.
Moved by Ms. Point Dexter, seconded by Mr. Kern. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill two thirty-four is adopted. Eight ayes, one excuse. Bill two three five.
Bill two thirty-five, amends ordinance number one three dash six six as amended relating to public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year July one, twenty thirteen to June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Increases the housing and community development Kamakua Nui Community Development County project of three million eight hundred thousand dollars to the capital budget. Funds for the project shall be provided from the general obligation bond capital projects fund fund balance and/or other sources, three million eight hundred thousand dollars and would be used towards home construction. Reference Communication seven nine five, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading April sixteen, twenty fourteen. Note, requires two-thirds vote of the entire membership to amend pursuant to section one zero dash six E Hawaii County Charter.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Uh, motion to approve Bill two thirty-five.
Moved by Ms. Point Dexter, seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight ayes, one excuse, Bill two thirty-five is adopted. Um, going on to reports, clerk.
Reports, A W E S C dash twelve, Communication seven seven five. Nomination of Mr. Thomas H. Lodge to the Game Management Advisory Commission from Mayor William P. Konoye dated March twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen, submitting for the council's review and confirmation thereof nomination.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kern.
Move to approve the nomination of Thomas Lodge to the Game Management Advisory Commission and file all related communications.
Moved by Mr. Kern and seconded by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are eight ayes, one excuse, and nomination is confirmed. At this time, I'll take a short recess while we, um, await the, um... Okay. Um, never mind, I, I'm not... I'll work on, um...
Madam Chair, I move to, uh, remove Bill two three one draft two from the table.
Been moved by Mr. Kern, seconded by Mr. Kamelomela to remove Bill two... Sorry, two three one draft two from the table. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are eight ayes, one excuse. This one.
Madam Chair, I withdraw Communication seven eight three point five. It's dead.
Madam Chair. It, what is it, it's my, um...
Uh, I don't think that seven eight three point five was officially... Right, we, um... Right, we had, um, she had a, uh, my, my question is, we had Communication seven eight three point seven, um, from Mr. Toriano, which was played on the table. I don't think we even brought forward seven eight three point five.
Correct. Point, point of clarification, can you do that while it's on the, uh, on the table?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, it's fine, okay.
Oh, is it something, I thought we pulled the whole thing off the table.
Um, no, we understood that we had to pull, because I, there was a motion made for each one, so I just, uh, made the motion to bring back Bill two thirty-one, and then I was gonna make a motion to bring back seven eight three point eight, which was, um, balleried, which then we could amend.
Madam Chair. No.
I think you can withdraw, um...
I think I can withdraw it anytime, but, um, and to make sure we do it correctly, we can do it the other way, too. I have no problem. However, Hilo is in the process of numbering the amendment to vow, um, amendment, so we do need to take a recess.
Before we do that, did you want to remove seven eight three point seven from the table?
Madam Chair, I move to remove, um, Communication seven eight three point eight from the table.
Well, that's, that's, um, Ms. Point Dexter.
Yeah, so, maybe the point, I'm not, the way I thought it was supposed to happen is we bring back the original bill, then we have our first, um, amendment that would go in there. See, I, I thought we had to do seven point eight point, excuse me, seven eight three point eight first, that would go in there, then we would amend it with the contents of seven eight three point seven, or, or, and the amendment that you have coming up.
But, um, at, at the, after we adopt, um, or if we adopt seven eight three point eight, we may not need seven eight three point seven. I'm exploring, considering withdrawing it, but I guess right now I'm just, um, trying to understand if we can take them both off the table first before you can withdraw this one? Or, or, proceed.
Why don't we take a short recess?
Okay, thank you, recess. Two thirty-one draft two from the table, and as we move forward here now, we need to, um, do a couple of, uh, housekeeping things, and first I'll ask Ms. Ford, um, if she, uh, could restate her, um, desire to re-withdraw Communication seven eight three point seven.
That one is off the table at this point? Have we made that? No, but it was on the table, I can't do anything until it's off the table.
Well, you can, you can withdraw it while it's on the table.
Are you sure?
We told you can withdraw it anytime, anytime.
Yeah, but I said that, don't trust me.
Oh. Okay, well, if you would like to, um, make a motion to remove it, you can go first.
Yeah, I would, uh, I move to, uh, remove from the table Communication seven eight three point seven. Any second.
Second. Thank you. Moved by Ms. Ford, seconded by Ms. Point Dexter to remove Communication seven eight three point seven, um, from the table. All in favor, please, or any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We have, um, two, three, four, five, six ayes and three absents.
Yeah. Um, Madam Chair, may I withdraw Communication seven eight three point seven?
Yes, you may. Oh, Communication seven eight three point seven is withdrawn, and at this, oh, Mr. Nishimoto?
Yeah, thanks, thank you, Madam Chair. Staff is asking who's absent in corners for record-keeping purposes.
Who's absent? Um, Mr. Kern, Mr. Kamelomela, and Mr. Onishi are absent at this time. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And, um, at this time, I would, um, like to ask Ms. Point Dexter to make a motion to remove Communication seven eight three point eight from the table.
So, uh, move to remove seven eight three point eight from the table.
Uh, move on Ms. Point Dexter and seconded by Ms. Ford, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing there are, um, six ayes and three absent. And, um, council members, we, um, had begun to do some work on a new communication that would, um, be brought forward to amend, um, Ms. Point Dexter, Communication seven eight three point eight, but, um, at this time, we need to do a little bit more work on that communication, so, uh, Ms. Point Dexter.
Um, can I make a motion to postpone?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, to move by Ms. Point Dexter and seconded by Ms. Ford to postpone Bill two thirty-one draft two.
To the next council meeting.
To the next council meeting, um, do you know the date? Yeah, that would be till May thirteenth, twenty fourteen. Any discussion on the postponement? There are none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That would be six ayes and three absent. Um, at this time, Bill two thirty-one is postponed.
Move to adjourn.
Ms. Ford, move to adjourn, for a second.
Second.
Second. Second by Ms. Point Dexter. Any discussion? All in favor of postponement, please say aye. I mean, adjournment.
We're, we're adjourning now.
We have six, six in favor of adjourning. Meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.